All right, good evening and welcome to the City of Tulare Special Meeting for Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty five. With that, and our call to order is this is a study session, and comments at a special meeting or study session are limited to items listed on the special meeting agenda. If there is public speakers, each speaker will be allowed three minutes per item as recognized by the council. During this item or this special meeting, if you wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine, and the city clerk will assist you with your call. So with that, we will move to two point one, Women's Clubhouse Senior Housing and Downtown Redevelopment Project. Mr. Mondale.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Council. Good evening, staff and citizens. Grateful that you could be here to have this study session. There's a lot that I'm going to talk about tonight. I apologize for that. We don't have a ton of time. I asked that the questions be held to the end if possible, so we can get through it. The good news is most of this information you've seen parts and pieces of before. I've just sort of put together the possibility of three projects into one presentation, because I think there's a great opportunity to sort of work together and leverage the projects together, and I'll hopefully explain that in the meeting as we go. I had mentioned to you previously that, you know, sort of what the work that we're doing is sort of in waves or stages. The first wave or stage was sort of the, you know, five big projects that we brought on, that the city controlled all of the aspects of it. We had the land, we had the cash, we had the funding, we had the authority to do the projects. And the next series of projects that I'm bringing out are more complex, because they're bigger projects, they have more parts and pieces. We don't have all the funds, we don't have all the land, we don't have all the control or the authority. And so it involves us working with the private sector, non-for-profit organizations, et cetera. They also are more challenging, because, you know, there's there's strong feelings and emotions and thoughts about aspects of the project, and I'm not naive to that. It's it's important to me that there is. But my hope is, is that as we talk about the projects, that folks will remain, sort of remain open-minded to the concepts. I have no interest in forcing anyone to accept any of the ideas. You know, there's a lot of options in the ideas and a lot of flexibility. We can change things, we can remove things, we can add things. So I want folks to remain open-minded to the concepts. That's the way, in my experience, that if you remain open-minded, that's when you actually have the chance of maybe accomplishing something really interesting and great. I want to speak specifically to the Historical Society, because part of the projects we're going to talk about will address that. I want to say a few things. From my perspective, part of the role of the city manager is especially myself, as the city manager at Tulare, is to bring forth ideas and opportunities. Some of them will be accepted, some will not, and I accept that. Some of them may be difficult, and I would encourage folks that we should not be discouraged from the difficult. In fact, this community has a long history of doing difficult things. It's part of the thing that attracted me here, because it encourages me to think that we will continue to do bigger, bolder, difficult things as we go forward. I also want to mention that, you know, this city council and this city manager and staff support historic historical work. We support Historical Society, we support the Historical Museum, and we support historic preservation. In fact, over the last four years alone, we've done good historic preservation work. We spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to restore the SUSE pavilion, actually, I think, improve it, so that it'll last a lot longer at Zumball Park. We just refurbished the old clock tower that was at Zumball Park. We just installed it right in the center of the park in a very prominent position, and that will be revealed here shortly. Actually, you can drive by and see it tomorrow if you want. We just haven't uncovered the clock face yet. We're working hard to try to figure out a way to reuse and restore Medford Hangar. It'd be more of an adaptive reuse than a true restoration of it, but nonetheless, it's a preservation of that important historical artifact. We've done a lot of work on the Historic Preservation Ordinance in the last four years, and tonight, we're going to talk about the possibility of rehabilitating the Women's Clubhouse, which is the oldest structure, remaining structure in the City of Tulare. Okay, here we go. Hopefully, I get this right. Yeah, fantastic. Okay, so a little bit of background. Council, where we call that it adopted the downtown master plan update back in May of last year, and we've been doing a ton of work to implement that plan since that time. You'll remember that the key to redevelopment is focused on people, and we have to provide opportunities, amenities for people, including people that are living downtown, working downtown, eating downtown, recreating and entertaining downtown. You have to do all those things simultaneously if you want to have successful downtown redevelopment, and you have to do it in a lot of different ways. So, for example, in terms of working downtown, we've already implemented a few things. You know that Tulare Business Innovation Zone was recently completed, and they're chambers in the process of recruiting companies to occupy that space. Hopefully, you know, maybe twelve to twenty-four companies, we'll see. We're getting ready to issue, we've been researching and getting ready to issue a recruitment strategy to bring in some call centers into the downtown. These would not be outbound, they're not telemarketing, they're inbound call centers. So there's service. Like, if you call, for example, your medical insurance company have a question, you're usually talking to somebody at a call center. And those jobs are pretty, pretty well-paying jobs, but the great thing about call centers is they employ a lot of people, and they do it pretty quickly, and they've got great training programs to bring them up into higher positions. And we did the downtown rehabilitation grant program. So we had some nice success with that program in terms of bringing back to life some of our buildings downtown and creating job opportunities for folks. Right now, we have, in terms of trying to bring people downtown for eating, food and beverage, we have the taste program that's underway, and we've got about four projects that have recently been approved. So we'll have four new restaurants downtown. We have some other ones that committee's still reviewing and working on. We are, we've issued a public market RFP to recruit a developer that might help us maybe build a public market downtown as another means to attract people into the downtown and provide opportunity for not only retail, but also for food. And in terms of recreating and entertaining, the big move there primarily was the Zumball Park project, not only the renovation of the park to bring people to enjoy the recreational aspect of it, but the concert series for the entertainment. The downtown master plan also included catalytic sites that if we develop the sites in their key locations, could also help stimulate redevelopment. And some of these projects we're going to talk tonight, from our perspective, not only help us potentially redevelop a catalytic site, but they also bring opportunities to increase working opportunities, eating opportunities, entertaining, and most importantly, in my mind, living opportunities. That's the one area we haven't put a lot of energy into yet in terms of bringing folks living downtown, and these projects would help us with that. So we're going to look at three potential sites. One is the former Nielsen site, as a potential mixed-use project. This one won't be new to you, because it's already included in the downtown master plan. And then, we're also going to look at the former library and museum site as a potential senior housing location, as well as the Women's Clubhouse site. So, this slide, you've seen before, this isn't a downtown master plan. It just shows the Nielsen site. You recall the, the building that was there, that the owner so graciously decided to help, you know, remove that building. They had the option of either fixing it up or removing it, and they chose to remove it. It was tough. It has a great history to it, but that building was really cut up on the inside, and it was tough to figure out how much money you would spend trying to renovate the building for more modern use versus just creating a new building from scratch. This was just the design concept that the master plan consultant prepared, right? It's like, so what if we just create a mixed-use project? You see many of these projects in many downtowns everywhere. You can go to downtown Visalia and see structures like this. This was a conceptual three-story building. It doesn't mean it has to look just like that, but we had to put something together to give the idea of what a mixed-use project might look like, so we could develop a pro forma to understand how much it would cost. Then this is just that same building blown up a little bit. And so you see in this image, it shows the possibility of having ground floor retail uses on the bottom, and then up above, you know, office and residential uses with a separate structure. This would take over where the Nielsen's building was, and then where the current Civic Affairs building is as it exists today, with some possibility of structured parking in the back. So that was the concept that's in the master plan. There's nothing new there. This was just a pro forma. I know it's hard to read. I apologize for that. Council, you have a copy of this presentation at the desk. We will post this to the city's website starting tomorrow, or folks can call the clerk's office to get information on it. But this is the pro forma. And what this concept, you know, that building concept shows is, it could produce in this, under this design, about twenty-four residential units of mixed sizes and types, about fourteen thousand seven hundred square feet of office, about seventy-six hundred square feet of retail, hundred and twenty-three parking spaces. Just, just for context, a parking space, a structured parking space today costs somewhere around thirty-five thousand dollars per space to construct. I'm talking about structured vertical parking. So that cost is about four point three million dollars just for the parking structure alone. What you'll see is, that pro forma shows that the project doesn't work currently in the marketplace, right? So if we just said to a developer, hey, we want you to come in and build this park, project and charge market rate rents, it won't pencil out. That's very common in downtown areas when we're starting the redevelopment process, right? Downtowns that are very successful, the, the market is such that it'll support the projects in the beginning, when you're starting to do redevelopment, it doesn't. And that's why, when I first came to you four years ago, I said, there's some projects that, you know, we may have to talk about doing, where the city heavily subsidizes the project, and that subsidy can take many different forms. In one of my former communities, I think I mentioned to you, we bought an old office building, and we gave the land and the building to a developer for free. We gave them the building so they could build residential. They started that project, they built residential into it, and that, that, we had to do that in order for the developer to make any profit. If they had to pay anything for the building, they weren't going to be able to make a profit in building it out for residential. And that profit, that project is profitable and successful now, and it has started the process of attracting more residential downtown. I was just there this weekend, actually. I was really happily pleased to see about ten years after we started that, that project, they're building their second hotel, they're building their second parking garage, there's no vacancies in the downtown, they had new investment in infill housing. So all the patterns that I've been describing to you work, but you have to start in the beginning subsidizing these things, otherwise they won't happen themselves, okay? Now, I'm not saying we have to do the project, I'm saying if you want it to happen, then you have to be willing to subsidize it. So this project, as its design, would have a deficit of about eight million dollars in order for it to move forward. I'm not saying the city has to subsidize that, but someone's got to write a check for that amount if a developer's going to take it on. And that's under the assumption that the city purchases the land and contributes the land. We own half the land, we would purchase the other half and contribute it to a developer. The appraised value of the land is three hundred thousand dollars. We did offer the property owner the appraised value plus their costs associated with demolition. I don't know what their costs are. I assumed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So theoretically, we would spend about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars buying the property and then turn around and donate it to a developer. Again, because it won't work in the marketplace with a market-rate developer, we need to be thinking about if we want to do a project like this somewhere in the downtown, using a nonprofit developer. We are very fortunate. We have one of the best nonprofit developers that I've ever seen for affordable housing in the Central Valley. Self-help enterprises, we've had conversations with them. There's others, there's certainly other affordable housing developers. But one of the great things about self-help is they do a lot of different stuff. So they don't just build, like apartment complexes. They built a great mixed-use project that looks very similar to what we're proposing in Visalia today. You could drive over there and take a look at it. So we need to be thinking along those lines. One of the reasons for that is, an affordable housing developer can get free money from other places, right? They can go and get tax credit money, they can go leverage grant programs. So instead of the city having to write a check for eight point one million, we can find federal and state dollars to help offset those costs. And one of the reasons you do that is you want to establish residential, so you can prove that people are willing to move and buy and live in those spaces or rent those spaces. And then, over time, the private sector will start building that to take on the additional demand as people see that it works. The next project I want to talk about is the former library and a museum site. Again, I recognize this will be controversial to some folks. It's a concept. I don't mean to offend anyone. I fully, listen, I've done a lot of projects in my lifetime. I know what it takes to build projects. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears by a lot of people over a long period of time. I honor and respect it. I understand it. But what I want to show is an opportunity, in my mind, an opportunity to actually honor what has been committed by the, by the folks in the museum project and leverage it to give them something better and something more over time. So, in this concept, what we were, what we're talking about, here, let's see here, get this hoop on thing. Here we go. So this is the existing fire station, which would remain. This is the Historical Museum, a little over thirty thousand square feet, if I recall correctly. This is the former library site, which council has already said, we, we'll move forward with demolition. We're in the process of getting those bids and doing the environmental work and everything, getting ready for that. Here's the senior center that the city runs right behind the parking lot. So in this concept, and again, these are just concept drawings. It doesn't mean it'll look exactly like this, but this is the concept, that we would construct senior affordable housing. This is showing a, a structure that's about thirty thousand square feet, about fifty units in it, a community center of about thirty-five hundred square feet with pickleball courts, another structure with about fifteen units or so in it, and some solar to support it from an energy perspective, and a community garden, about a ten thousand square foot community garden. That's another goal of the park master plan and something that we're working to achieve. Why do we think a community garden might work here? For a couple of reasons. One, we identified another site early on in West Tulare, or another site was brought up that's on a commercial corridor, and the question was asked, could that work for a garden? The answer is yes, it could work probably anywhere. But one of the challenge, because a couple of challenges. One, there's not just the challenge of coming up with the money to build it, but there's the cost associated with operating it. And so the thought process is here, is if the city took the site that it owns that's on the commercial corridor and it sells it, but that site is a very good site for commercial development, we sell it to somebody for commercial development, now we'll start generating taxes off of that other property, right? But we take the sale proceeds from the sale of that site, and we put those dollars into building the public garden here. One of the nice things about the public garden here is, not only is it still on the west side, but it's within proximity of the downtown, and the operator of the affordable housing complex and all the residents are much more inclined to be able to help the city to maintain it on a regular, ongoing basis than if it was perhaps somewhere else not associated with a group that has a vested interest in the idea of enjoying public garden space. This was just the, sort of the basic numbers from that project. A lot of that I've already gone over, about a little over an acre and a half of the site. This is the pro forma. I know it's really hard to see, and we'll go over these numbers later again. But basically, what this shows is, again, this project doesn't work in the marketplace. And normally, when people will look at it and say, well, it doesn't work in the market, we shouldn't do it, we should back away. And I would encourage people to say, no. If it's a project that makes sense from a public, public perspective, how can we approach getting the project done? It might involve some incentive, but it might also involve, like I said, working with a nonprofit that can get tax credits, federal grants, state grants. You have to, you have to be patient, because you got to wait for the right product, the right program to align with the right parties, with the right developer. But when they align, it's it's magical what can happen. And I'll show you that here as we get towards the end of the presentation. So what's some of the preliminary, oh, did I miss that on my other side? Hold on. No, I did. I didn't cover. So what are some of the preliminary conclusions from this project? Well, again, we could achieve some of the city's goals. We have a need for affordable senior housing. We have a desire in the community for more pickleball courts. We're working on, you know, we restriped some at Centennial Park. We have plans to do more pickleball, and it was a great idea to spread them around in the community for different groups to use. We have a desire for a public garden, like I said. Let's see. Yeah, and I already mentioned about the maintenance of it. The project isn't feasible. It's about seven point seven million dollars short in terms of how it can work. But if we were to be successful with getting, you know, federal and state grants, we might be able to fill that gap with those dollars. Or we're assuming that we would be, the city would be responsible for relocating the Historical Museum. We haven't determined what those costs are yet. We don't, we don't even know if there's any openness, willingness to even consider that idea, right? We would have to demolish the structures. We're estimating that cost about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The current museum lease expires, per the contract, it expires in November twenty thirty-two. I don't think they took possession right away. I think there was a few years delayed, so we'll have to have a conversation with them. But nonetheless, it's coming up. So I think we need to have a dialogue about, does it make sense? I know the, the Historical Society has asked for at least the extension. We wanted to wait to have that discussion until we have the opportunity to have this discussion, and then I think we can kind of start getting into that discussion as we go forward. Does it make sense for them to stay there? Does it make sense for them to relocate, you know, enter another fifty-year lease, whatever the case may be? I'm going to propose an alternative approach to a fifty-year lease here in a minute. And then, you know, currently, we provide them about a twenty-five thousand dollar a year subsidy. Our current thinking is that we work with the Historical Society to see if we could look at the possibility of putting them into this mixed-use project along the downtown. The current thinking is, what if, keep pushing the wrong button, here we go. What if, instead of them getting a lease, what if we put them in fee simple ownership space? And it doesn't have to be this one. I'm just pointing this out. Here's a two-story space. So it would be, the museum itself would be smaller than the museum space that they currently have, but they would own it in fee simple. Instead of having a fifty-year lease at a dollar a year, they'd own it in fee simple. They could borrow against the equity in the property, they could sell the property, they could do anything they would want to do with it. But it would be brand-new space. We would help them get a, a graphic artist to design the interior. It would be smaller in the sense that they would have a fixed display, and then they would have room for an alternating rotating display. The other concepts that we have is that we would lease to them for a dollar a year, the Women's Clubhouse, and I'll get into that into a minute. And then we'd have a storage space that we would build for them in the downtown area where they can store the rest of their display. And then every six months, or however frequently they wanted to do it, they would create the rotating display to continue to give folks a reason to constantly come back to the museum, because it's a changing display as we go. The other thing I like about this is, and again, I see the Historical Museum as a great asset. In fact, I've said this before. I have never seen a better historical museum for a city our size than any community I've ever been. And I'm not talking about just the ones I've worked on, I'm also talking about the ones I've traveled in. I think it's a fantastic historical museum. One of the challenges I have with it is, after, I think you've been in there half a dozen times, I I don't think there's, other than the rotating displays that they have, the, the artist displays, et cetera, you start, as an individual, may lose interest in terms of why do you go back, which is why I think in the, the more modern way of museums functioning, having a more thorough rotating display about Tulare and about, you know, traveling displays, whatever the case may be, having the ability to have that flexibility, I think, helps them. I think also putting them downtown, right across from City Hall, right across from Zumball Park, we're using them as a tool to attract more people into our community. Every developer and every investor that walks in City Hall, my staff would be instructed to say, while you're here and you're thinking of investing in Tulare, go to the Historical Museum. They're right across the street. Don't have to even change your parking space. Just walk over there, get to know the folks, see what Tulare's all about. They, I think, could partner with us on special events at Zumball Park, et cetera. Let's go back here now. So they're really being used as a catalytic project to help us be successful in furthering redevelopment of downtown. All right. Yeah, so I covered the storage space and the Women's Clubhouse. Again, if we're going to do something like this, we have to partner with the nonprofit sector to make it work financially. And here's the Women's Clubhouse. So as you know, currently, the city owns the Women's Clubhouse building that's sitting on Union Pacific property, right? This is the retention basin that's out there. So we've been having conversations with Union Pacific about buying that property for them. We looked at the possibility of leasing it, and we looked at the possibility of buying it. Leasing it would be a little bit expensive. Right now, we're paying, I think it's fifteen thousand a year. They're upping it to eighteen thousand. That'll come to council shortly. They want thirty-five thousand a year, and that would go up every year three percent if we were going to lease it, and we can only do at least one year at a time, meaning you could put a bunch of money in fixing the building, and next year, they could cancel the lease, and you've lost that money, and they could take over the property. I'm not saying they would do that, but under a year lease, they could do that. We talked to them. They don't have any real purpose for the site, which is great, but that's why we're talking about buying it. So we're talking about spending about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to buy it. It would require an act of Congress, as you know. But in doing so, we'd be able to build a parking lot behind it, so that the uses that are occurring in the site would have dedicated parking. We're talking about the possibility of converting it back into a special event center. So this is the existing floor plan. You can see the spaces. We're talking about removing this. We had an architect come through and do all this analysis, removing this room, rebuilding out the commercial kitchen. Well, I'll show you, this is the proposed floor plan right here. Keeping the stage, keeping the main hall, adding bathroom space. You have to add more fixtures to meet the current code, leaving a, creating a bridal suite, creating a bar room off of the main hall, and refurbishing the commercial kitchen. So this space could be completely used on a regular basis for renting to the public for all kinds of small interior indoor events. This is a potential This is a potential conceptual rendering of the renovation of that space. And then this is an exterior renovation, you know, you'd have some outdoor space that could be used for weddings and other kinds of events, et cetera. This is the, the current proposed, you know, I don't know that these numbers are a hundred percent accurate, remember they're, they're estimates. Uh, but these are the current numbers based on what the architect engineer put together. So a complete renovation of that space is, you know, starting to approximate two million dollars, about one point seven million dollars. So what are the preliminary conclusions from this project? Again, it achieves, helps to achieve a number of city goals. Uh, we purchased the property from Union Pacific, which we're working on right now, I actually met with Union Pacific again today on this. Our lobbyist is working on the act before Congress, which council will see. Um, the project doesn't work in the marketplace right now, it's about one point six million dollars to get this done. Um, our assumption would be we'd buy the land and contribute the land, you know, that we'd buy the land and the, the land would be contributed to the project. We would continue to retain ownership. But we would enter into a long-term lease with the historical museum, if they were so inclined, it could be a different party, it could be the city doing it. But I like the idea of having a nonprofit doing it. I like the historical museum in part because we, and you have a market study at your desk, um, it looks like this. We went ahead and looked at all the venues in the twenty-five mile radius, and how many venues are indoor versus outdoor? There's about forty total venues, only about half are indoor. And what they're charging for rents and what we think could be a good source of income, you know. My current thinking is, if we did a deal here with the historical museum, we would retain ownership of the property. We would retain the responsibility for capital maintenance. They would, capital maintenance, replacing roofs, replacing air conditioning systems. They'd have responsibility for regular maintenance, but the revenue they would generate from their leasing of this space, instead of it just being a financial noose around their neck, they would use that revenue to help offset staff costs, operating costs and maintenance costs. Do a dollar a year lease with them. Um, I'm also suggesting that the city would contribute some dollars towards the renovation. My suggestion on that is it's, it's primarily would be the private sector, they would do, they would do a fundraising effort. You know, so if, if the, if the Union Pacific, I've talked to them about the possibility of them putting in about three hundred thousand dollar grant towards the rehabilitation of the building, that's not a commitment, but that's our current conversations. The city maybe would match that. So maybe you start the project with six hundred thousand dollars and you have to raise another million to a million and a half dollars to get the project done. I think that's very possible, given that we now own the site, so the Union Pacific can't take it back. And we're putting real dollars into it to, to help seed money, to help the private sector want to raise the balance of the funds. Which I think really helps the, the historical museum long-term financially, because I think that, that Jay would generate revenue for profit there, frankly. I know they're nonprofit, but you understand what I mean by profit. Have dollars in the bank for savings and to cover their operational costs. I think that covers all of that. So what are sort of the combined conclusions? Like, why are we talking about doing this? Well, the first is, we're achieving a lot of the city's goals by doing this. Job creation, living conditions, community garden. You know, rehabilitating, renovating one of the oldest structures in the city, these are all community, these are all city council goals. The other is, these are, you're talking about three projects that talk about a total investment of about thirty-seven million dollars, right? That's a big investment in the downtown. Now, it's going to require about seventeen a million of that to come from other sources. But that's again where we work with the, the, the federal government and the state government on grants and earmarks. We would have to put some money into it, obviously, we're talking about donating the land, maybe doing some fee credits and fee waivers, expedited permitting. But in addition to that, these are the costs that I'm currently thinking about. That, you know, we're talking about land acquisition costs for the Nielsen property of about four hundred and fifty thousand. The demolition, um, of the library and the museum, about three hundred and fifty thousand. Building a storage facility for the historical society, about a hundred thousand. Uh, buying the land from Union Pacific, about three hundred and sixty-five thousand. And then about three hundred thousand dollar contribution towards the women's clubhouse renovation, so about one point five million. I'm not saying that's a fixed number, you know, the project can change, we could reduce the scope of the project. And the Nielsen site, if we get rid of the garage, that cuts out four and a half million dollars, right? If we scale back the project, or in the Nielsen site, if we added density, if we added more units, you might generate more revenue to cover some of those costs. So there's a lot of variables to work through, it's just the concept. But again, we would follow the basic principles, principles we've been following for the past four years. We use one-time money, one-time surplus money that we have to make one-time contributions towards projects. Investing a one and a half million dollars to get a thirty-seven million dollar investment is pretty damn good investment right there. That's, you know, almost a thirty times investment for your money, right? That doesn't talk about any recurring regular revenue that come off of any of these sites. The other thing we try to do is leverage other people's money. We put some of our seed capital money, and then we try to get other people's money to pay for the lion's share of the projects, right? And that's what we've had a lot of success. And the other thing we've had success in is being flexible. We bring forth these ideas and then we allow them to evolve over time. So what are my recommendations? I'm asking a few things from council. The first thing I'm asking for is that we appoint two members from council, just to work with staff and the private parties and the nonprofit groups to just continue to talk about and explore these ideas. The two council members I'm recommending are Councilmember Maderos and Councilmember Sayer. They both had a vested interest in these discussions for a while with me, working on his project. Obviously, Councilman Maderos as an attorney has a great working knowledge on how to put these kind of structures and these deals together. I think he also has a strong relationship with all of the different parties. And Councilwoman Sayer, I think, has from day one, uh, if you don't know this, she has talked about the women's clubhouse probably every time we meet. And so it's a, it's a strong passion of hers, obviously, there may be other council members that are interested. And then I'd ask for the other thing, don't kill the project, don't say no tonight. Just be open to the idea of continuing to pursue it, recognizing we have to be flexible. We might have to change some of the terms and conditions to reduce cost or increase revenue. We might have to look at the possibility of only doing one of the three projects or two of the three projects, right? It may, it may, we may hit a, we might hit a, a hard no, and it's like, okay, it's hard no, we go in a different direction. You know, I'd want to be part of those hard no discussion, because if you say hard no to something, there's consequences of that, right? If, if you say no to this, the other options may not be as great either. And so I want to talk about both sides of that, the pros and cons of going different directions. And the third is, for example, with the Nielsen site, this is a concept. If, if the property owners say, we're not interested, we don't participate, I'd recommend we issue an RFP and we announce to the world and the private sector, this is a project we want to do, we're open to doing it in other locations. Who's interested in partnering with us? I, I can tell you my experience. There's always, when you're talking about putting money into a project and, and, I mean, just look at our downtown rehabilitation grant program, we put a million dollars and we got four great projects out of it. We had an appetite from others to do the taste program, put a million dollars in that, now we have four new projects, right? So there's going to be other people that are going to want to do a project if there's others who don't. And, and, and if they don't, that's fine, everyone has their reasons. I just think we should be flexible to see if there's other ways and other routes we can go. So that ends my presentation, I know we don't have a ton of time, but I am open to any questions that council has.
I think what I'd like to do is, uh, council, before we have our comments or questions, is I do have a yellow card for public comment. And to hear this input from Patty Rocha regarding the development and the proposals. Patty Rocha represents the Tulare Historical Society. So with that public comment, Patty, I have your card and welcome you to come up and provide your comments.
Good evening, council. Before I begin, I'm very glad that your, your presentation is possibilities, uh, that you're open to suggestions. Because what I'm going to say tonight is a suggestion, and it's, it's a suggestion from myself as a representative of the board of directors of the museum. Years ago, our city envisioned transforming the block where our beloved museums currently stands into a vibrant cultural center. This idea resonated with many of the citizens who saw the rich potential in the space. Yet, as plans evolved, we witnessed the unfortunate decision to demolish our historical library instead. This raises an important question. Why not pivot our focus back to the original vision? And consider a more beneficial development for our community as a whole. We propose that the city explore the possibilities of purchasing the housing at the other end of the block and develop a low-income housing project there. This location is ideal, situated alongside the senior center and the fire station and the museum. It creates a cohesive hub for our senior citizens, fostering a sense of community and accessibility. Moreover, we should not overlook the potential of the old library. This sturdy cinder block structure is not just another building. It stands as a last mid-century relic of our city and a testament to our history. Instead of allowing it to fall into despair or into destruction, why not refurbish it? Imagine transforming it into a commercial or to a cultural arts center and/or a combination with a police substation, encore theater. And utilizing larger spaces to rent out as, for reception, small events, et cetera. Additionally, the women's clubhouse could be restored and repurposed as a medical urgent care center, offices or community services specifically designed to serve the residents of the west side. The skate park, too, presents an opportunity for enhancement. Consider redesigning it into a family-friendly area that could host outdoor shows such as art shows, craft fairs and various community events. This space could become a vocal point for creativity and connection, bringing citizens together and fostering the sense of belonging. Surely, there are grants available to our city aimed at enhancing the arts and cultural venues in our community. By revitalizing, revitalizing this area into a genuine cultural center, we would not only serve the west side citizens, but also the entire community of Tulare. Every resident deserves access to safe, diverse space that nurtures creativity and provides opportunities for engagement and growth. In closing, let us work together to bring this vision to life. Our community has the potential to flourish with thoughtful development that respects our history while paving the way for a brighter future. We urge you to consider these suggestions and explore the possibilities that lie ahead for Tulare. I thank you for your time. On behalf of the Tulare Board of Directors, who are few of them are here with me this evening, we look forward to your thoughts and working with you.
Counsel, if I can just quickly address that, so I will just say that I'm certainly open to any ideas, anything that council directs, but even separate from council directing, you know, sitting down with you. The only caveat I would say to that is, whatever, one of my hopes for a guiding principle ultimately would be, whatever approach we're taking, ideally, we're thinking about, you know, not only where's the money coming from? Like, so in this scenario, I suggest that about one point five or so million dollars of city money to leverage thirty-seven million dollars of others' money. I would hope that we continue to think about, okay, where is the money coming from in these scenarios? And, and the guiding principle for me would be not the lion's share from the city in, in terms of the capital costs, and not the lion's share of the city in terms of the operating costs. As long as we could use those guiding principles, and at the end of the day, those things we're doing are achieving the city's goals, attracting people, whether it's housing or whatever the case is, I think it makes sense and worthwhile to look at that. But if the projects are simply projects that are going to be large city subsidy to construct and operate, that's where it becomes challenging. So keep that in mind, but I'm happy to sit down and explore any, and we might have to study. We might have to do some, uh, market studies like we did with this one to look at some of those ideas. We have some consultants we use, but I'm open to any of those concepts.
Okay. I will say though, to put it on the record, the museum has no desire to have their museum torn down. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Uh, with that, is there any other public comment or anyone else who would like to, um, speak on, on the presentation? Good evening, Alan. Welcome.
My name is Alberto Aguilar, and, and I like your idea, uh, except for, uh, the women's, uh, house. It is so close to the railroad tracks. I don't know if you've ever been there for any function, but it's not a good place, not a good location. They should have relocated it someplace else where it's not too close to the railroad tracks. Uh, but I like the idea, I like the concept, you've just got to go ahead and find someplace else to, you know, to go ahead and do it. And it's been non-functional for so long, it's so dilapidated, I don't know. The only way to go ahead and, uh, get it fixed properly is put a lot of, a lot of labor into that. You got a lot of dry rot. I mean, the last time I walked in there, I was amazed at the thing still standing, it's, it's been so long. So it's going to take a lot of money to go ahead and put it back together again. But think about location, location, location.
Thank you, Alan. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the items presented? All right, thank you. And with that, I'll go around council, Mr., I'll go, I'll just go around the room and start with Vice Mayor here.
The other question I had for Mark was, uh, the price for the women's clubhouse, was that also including the skate park?
No, the skate park is not part of this project, but if we are to buy the skate park property, it'll be a similar cost for the purchase of the land.
Was it one time Union Pacific said that if we bought one, we had to buy the other?
Yes, and, and I actually met with them today and their original, the letter they just gave us didn't include the skate park. So I asked them again today, are, are we just doing the one or the both? I, I'd rather do both, so we get it done at one time and not have to deal with this again ten years from now. She was going to go back and talk to her team to verify which one we're doing, okay?
Along those lines on, on that particular skate park, uh, so is it, uh, is it the museum's position to get rid of it? Is that what you came up and testified, saying that turn it into a cultural space? Is that the museum's official sort of concept?
Absolutely not. Our, our vision is to see that the skate park become part of a cultural center. Where families can gather, currently, the skate park is used very little. It's, uh, inhabited more by homeless and graffiti and so forth. And it could be revitalized to be made into a, an area where we could have art shows and people, and gatherings where people would feel safe.
So in addition to that?
In addition to that.
I just wanted to clarify that, because I, I know a lot of kids, I see a lot of kids that use a skate park, so just want to make sure that was something, uh, there. Um, in terms of, in terms of the overall sort of presentation, I think for, for me, Mr. Mayor, council is, as, as part of this process as we explore, I mean, I, I think this is a great idea, so I love the multi-use project concept. I think I talked to Mark many times about trying to do something like that, retail and senior or housing above. So I think that's, that's, I really see, like seeing those, uh, sort of renderings. But I think for me, I'd like to see if, if at some point, the council could have the opportunity to work with staff and the community in putting together some guiding, uh, principles as, uh, as Mark mentioned. In terms of like, what is it we would really want to see? Because for me, my first instinct, given your presentation, is we need to create some housing. We need to create some housing downtown and throughout the city that is going to help us with arena numbers, right? Because we are so far behind, I mean, it's ridiculous how far behind not only our cities, but just the general cities across California are in terms of affordable housing. So the way that I see the presentation pencil out is definitely partnering with self-help enterprises or other nonprofit sort of, um, developers. So for me, a guiding principle would be affordable housing. Uh, and then also your, uh, your, uh, principle of, can it attract people to certain places, right, and so forth? So I think for me, I, I'd like to, in the future, maybe have a little conversation among us, what are some of those other principles or guidelines?
And, and I apologize, these would, the, the units we're showing would address arena.
Yeah, and, and I, and I, and I got that, because that's how they would pencil out. And I think for me, the, in terms of the actual sites, I mean, I'm, I definitely, I'm a big proponent of, um, of building a community garden. You know, and that, that's one concept, uh, I think for me, just getting an understanding of if, if the museum were to be relocated, what that cost would be, where they could go, uh, where, where that would happen. I know downtown is a preferable location, but I'm, I'm still interested in that whole concept. And then for me, in the particular Nielsen's property, um, I'm trying to understand if, I know there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of meetings and a lot of work that was done with our city staff and, and maybe one or two council members to try to clean up that location and to, to, to keep it what it is now. I'm just trying to understand if those owners are even open to this type of thing. You know, because we're putting a lot of sort of eggs in that basket. And it'd be a great project as you laid it out, but I don't know if those folks are even open to that conversation.
Yeah, you know, I, I can't give you a definitive answer on that. Uh, that's one of the reasons why I've recommended that we have two of the council members that, you know, obviously have been in this community for many years and have relationships with the individuals, to have them have some of those discussions. I think probably, um, those discussions may go differently than the ones I've had, I've not got a no, I just have not got a yes. I, I know that they've shared a little bit about some of the ideas they want to pursue, but they, they don't seem to be united. There's a number of parties involved in the ownership and they don't seem necessarily to be united in that approach. And, and some of the things they're recommending to be united in that approach, and, and some of the things they're recommending don't, doesn't, we're not allowed to do that by the zoning. And so I just think having more in-depth conversations with them, but at the end of the day, if they were to say, we're not interested, that's one of the reasons I say, if we remain flexible and we say, let's just do an RFP and talk about doing a, a multi-scale, three-story mixed-use building, it'd be great on that site, but maybe that's not site one. You know, long-term, you know, like I was sharing in the last community I was in, we, there's, they probably have four or five of these now. So maybe we start a project like this somewhere else with the parties that are interested, and this could be a phase two or phase three or a phase four project.
Right, and then just the last point, and then there's a second round, I wanted to talk about the women's clubhouse specifically, but what I would recommend would be that, that our city manager's staff really put together, I don't want to call it aggressive, but just a timeline, say, look, it took forever to get Nielsen's to respond to demolishing that building. I'd hate for us to be able to say, okay, it's the year 2029, and we're still waiting to see if they want to do something. I would rather say, hey, we're going to give them till July of next year to say, hey, you know, these are some of the things we really want to move on it, and if by July of next year, they say no, then we move on. I don't want to wait till 2029, 2030 to get a letter back and say, hey, we're still thinking about it, so.
Councilman Maderos?
Ladies first, I guess. I just have a couple of comments. I, it's no secret that the women's clubhouse is one of my pet projects. I had my wedding reception there, my children did recitals there. It's just one of the most important historical building in our community that's left. The idea of retaining that as something other than a venue for us to continue, that kind of opportunity for our citizens to have that available for those same kinds of, is something we could talk about, but that's not, it's not setting well with me to make it into a medical facility rather than a cultural center. Also, restoring the library. Eight years ago, I, I went through that library, looking at it to try to see what we could do with it. I, I'd like to see the cost it would be to renovate or restore that library. It's full of mold, it's full of asbestos, and so that's something I would want to look at further in terms of cost and feasibility to even do that, to restore or utilize that building in the condition that it's in. The last time I was in the women's clubhouse, it's remarkable how sustainable that building is. The foundation is in perfect condition. Manny and I went through that building, oh, we've gone through it, I don't know how many times recently. It's amazing, the condition of that building. It is not going to fall down. And it's been in that location, it was built in that location in the 1800s. I think historically, that location is really pertinent to the value of the historical nature of that building. So that, that's just a couple of thoughts I had. I'm certainly open to, to any kind of flexible consideration of how we can best have cultural events for our community and how we can preserve the historical building, particularly the women's clubhouse.
Now it's my turn. I, I want to say a few things as far as historically of what we're dealing with here without, just some, some background. I sat on the board of the Historical Society for, I think, you'd have to look at the records, but I think it was two terms, and in the late 90s, early 2000s. And when I left the board, the first thing that happened was my wife was recruited, and she's been associated with the Historical Society and the museum. She served for a period of time and then, and then has stayed on in some capacity or another for probably close to 20 years. So, so the relationship with the museum and my family is, is a strong one. I'm open to ideas under any circumstance, and, and what has been presented tonight are not solid ideas of what we're going to do, but ideas of what you might do. The thing that, I think the ideas that were presented by Patty, in what you've indicated as far as the board is concerned, I, I think are definitely things to consider. The one comment that struck me was, under no circumstances do we want the building yet torn down. That's an absolute, and I, I, I think that's non-productive. If I were sitting on that board still, I'd say my preference is not to have the building torn down, unless you provide me with something that makes a lot more sense to the society that we could do the same thing we're doing, but in a better way somewhere else. Show me where it's better, and we'll consider it. That means dialogue to find a better way and improve what you're dealing with. If that can be shown, then an open concept of what it is we're going to consider should, should be taken to the board for them to possibly move in that direction. And that's what I'm hearing in that presentation, both as to the women's, the possibilities as to the women's clubhouse, the possibilities of what could be done across from somewhat apart, the possibilities of, of reinvigorating downtown, not only with economic development, but with the inclusion of the Historical Society itself, so that when people come to downtown Tulare, like we did last Thursday, I think it was, Chris, we had the Thanksgiving, I'm not Thanksgiving, but the Halloween program on Thursday night that was a huge success. And there was the Union Western Bell Game, there was activity downtown that was, I, I found remarkable. But to have a situation to where there's the kind of activity that you see in other communities and, and the, and the museum be part of all of that, just that possibility, I think is something we need to consider and something we need to talk about. I've indicated to our city manager that this community will not want its museum torn down, in my opinion, unless the Historical Society fully buys into that concept. We can't, we can't even approach that if the answer is no before you've even heard what the possibility is going to be. So I think it's, it's something we should at least consider and address before decisions are made. That's why when, when I hear our city manager indicate, just don't slam the door, let's see where this goes, there's a lot of solutions here. One is the community garden that Mr. Segal has been talking about for a long time, the senior housing, the women's clubhouse concept, the, you know, the possibility of leaving the museum where it's at and building the rest around it. We can't even consider any of that if the answer is no, we're not going any further. So from my standpoint, being involved in this community as I have been for a good port, literally my, my whole life, my attitude is that we need to move forward, we need to get an act of Congress to buy the women's clubhouse. We have a lot of steps that need to be taken, but we need to have those steps taken as a community, all of us working together and all, all of us moving in the right direction to be able to eventually accomplish that. And if, and if the women's clubhouse is, because of its location, is something that we shouldn't go forward and spend money in, then we shouldn't do that. But, you know, having old buildings get torn down is hard to do in a community. We always, we also, we experienced that with a theater when it got torn down, and that's been a heartbreak in this community for a long period of time. I think, I, I agree with, with Councilmember Sair that the library has, you have to remember, the library has been there unoccupied in a dilapidated condition, the old library, for over 15 years. And this council's already made the decision, as I understand it, that it's time to tear that thing down before we have other issue, a fire, definite possibility that could not only affect that building, but affect the museum next door and, and the other issues that are involved in it. But in the final analysis, you can tell based upon what I've indicated, I'm, I'm strongly in support of the idea of at least leaving the door open to have conversations that are mutually beneficial to everybody. And if we work together, we can get to that, that end. Sure, so I think with that is the ask that's being presented to us is, one, these, these three items that are presented, which to keep it open, that was one of the asks, that we continue this research and feasibility and, and progress. The second ask is, there is to have two council members kind of work with staff for input as we continue these discussions in review. So I think with the, with that, is there any thoughts towards those asks? Did I miss your thoughts? I think others have spoken, but I haven't heard you speak. Quickly, appreciate our city manager bringing these topics in front of us, because I think one of the items that has been most destructive over 25 years that I've heard this is indecision. And as many of you and everybody have been at the table with these discussions, is it can't happen if you don't raise the flag up the flagpole. So our presentation tonight, the flag's been up the flagpole, here's some ideas and discussions, and endorse that. And I think with the ask is, keep the doors open to this as we move forward. Yes, there's a, a lot of debate and, and discussion with it. Keep it to the community, let's review these ideas and keep that discussion open. Absolutely. The second part with that is having the council members, these conversations are going to go. I'm not stepping in as a debate on specific items. I think what the city manager presented in the discussion is because you, you have to have a vision, you have to put that out there to get this going, and I think what you'd said, Dennis, and what Segal, everybody has said, let's keep it open as we keep, as we keep going. And appreciate the museum's comments and many others, let's keep the conversation going. We've got everybody's attention, we've got the items on the table, and let's keep, let's keep that going. So really with that, like I said, instead of, my thought is in our time, and we have our general meeting coming up, there's other items to grind on or debate, or really kind of those thoughts towards those ask, I endorse both those, those asks.
Before we do any direction, final direction, I, I just had a question, or a couple of questions. One is, as Mr. Maderos has brought up, the council's already made the decision, explicit decision, to demolish the library, we've allocated the money and the budget. Is there, and I think you're out there already looking for bids? Is that the current status?
Is Manny here? So where's Manny? There's Manny.
So I just want to get an update in terms of like what the timeframe was, because I know it was a priority for us.
Well, right now is with engineering, they're reviewing the RFPs, as soon as we communicate with engineering and get, they're okay, we're going to go ahead and start doing it. And we can put the RFP out up to, we can do two weeks if it's necessary. So as soon as they get the approval, we can run with it.
And I think we are doing some asbestos testing and there are some, was that part of it?
Done.
Okay, so we know what we have to do.
Would it be safe to say that it probably would happen in this fiscal year?
Oh, definitely this fiscal year, probably, possibly this calendar year. It won't take long to demolish the building once we get the bids, and it'd take a couple, three days, four days probably total.
And then the last question, Mr. Mayor, is in regards to the clubhouse, I know we've talked about it as many times, have you guys formally, and I was trying to read in the documents you sent, but I'm trying to recall if I read it anywhere else, have you proposed additional options? I mean, obviously, the idea would be to, you know, rehab it and reopen it where it's at, but we've also talked about moving into other locations. Has that kind of been more thoroughly discussed or put out there? Because I, I like to see that become back in the future as a recommendation.
Yeah, we, we, the, the current assumption or thought was that we would buy the property because our assumption has been that we would keep the clubhouse on its location. We have looked at, we have gotten bids or prices to relocate it, and it really depends on where we put it, because the cost goes, you know, you, you pay more as you travel. But we have the cost, we did a layout, putting it on the site of the former, the former library site, we have a layout of how that could fit, so I have a drawing that shows that. That is a possibility to do that as well. But if council would prefer, you know, we continue to move down the path on buying the property, but we haven't taken an official vote on it because we're not at that stage yet, but that will be coming back to council. I don't know when it's going to come, but I'm guessing it's possible this year, but I think it'll probably be early next year. If you want, we can also bring back these other options of where the clubhouse could go. I mean, my assumption has been it would go on city-owned property, not, if you, it can go anywhere in the city if we want to buy property. I didn't think council wanted to do that, so we can bring that back at any time as well, if council would like.
Yes.
Together is fine, yeah, that makes sense, okay.
I, I think in closing, I, and just as, there's a couple of points that are being made, and I think the city clerk, we can come back in the future, is some of these discussion items were at, I, this is my interpretation, I think some of the items we're talking about are being presented as though we haven't had presentations or we haven't had action, and we have. And I think two quorums, Councilman Maderos had said, over the four years, it was in our strategic planning CIP projects, which was the demolition of the current site after review. Now, that hasn't absolutely happened yet, but there's been meetings on that, discussion and action, a decision on that. Now, and the second part is, the review of the women's clubhouse has been going on at the same time, CIP, strategy planning, and the city council made a decision that the opportunity presented for purchasing the land, that would be executed. Now, the rest of the debate of the clubhouse, no, but those two action items have been in front of us and clear direction have been given, buy, buy the land and the bids for the demolition of the library.
Certainly, the demolishing the library, 100% that decision was voted on. The, the purchase of the land, the decision was made only in the sense of put the money into budget to do that, but not the formal action to actually.
No, but we've given.
Yes, but you've been taking, yeah, we're moving in the direction that council has given us, yes.
All right. Okay. And by all means, this is going to continue.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, so with that is, we'll continue this review, we want everybody at the table and continue those cross collaborations, conversations, community meetings, and engagement, and we have our two council members who will work with staff. Do we, have we indicated consensus on that approach? I didn't get any rebuttal. Are we in consensus on those approaches? Yeah, we are. Okay, so with that, as you've heard this discussion and you heard this presentation, by all means, if you didn't speak here tonight, welcome your comments to the council members, to the city. You can reach us by email, you can email them to the city clerk. I just want to encourage that as this conversation goes, and you heard that, if you have opinions, views, community input, want to be involved, let us know, and that's what we want to do. Right now, we will adjourn our special meeting, and we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll reconvene at our Tulare City Council regular meeting at 6:10. break and then we'll reconvene at our Tulare City Council regular meeting at six ten. All right. If we can have everybody come back to their position and seats and we're going to move forward with our agenda, I'll give everybody a moment. No, you don't need to run, Terry. It's all good. All right. I'm going to call to order our regular meeting of the Tulare City Council for Tuesday, November 4th. It's welcoming, you have residents of Tulare, visitors, staff and fellow council members. On our agenda is we have the pledge allegiance and invocation, and I'm going to ask that our pledge of allegiance be led by our Tulare Police Chief Fred Inklund. And if you would please remain standing for Brian Bell Bishop for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints.
Our Father in heaven, we are so very grateful to be able to be gathered here this evening. We're grateful to, uh, live in a country that allows us, um, freedom of thought and expression and also gives us the opportunity to, um, elect and appoint leaders to, um, represent us. We are grateful for all that those, um, leaders do and sacrifice in order to serve this community. And we ask thee to please bless us with thy spirit here this evening that, um, we may be guided in the deliberations that we make, um, that those who speak may be able to do so with clarity and that, um, decisions, uh, will be made, that will be made will be, um, according to thy will and that will do the most good. Um, we ask thee to, um, please bless the leaders of our state and our nation as well. And also please bless those who are, um, currently, um, suffering and in, um, poor circumstances. Help us to reach out to them and help them to feel thy love as well. Also, please bless our service members. Uh, we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
All right. Next on our agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from acting on any matter not on the agenda. However, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This is also the time for the public to comment on items listed under the consent calendar or to request an item from the consent calendar to be pulled for discussion purposes. In fairness to all who wish to speak, the public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes with each speaker allowed three minutes unless otherwise extended by council. For those that are viewing the meeting online or in the community or not in our chambers and you wish to make a public comment, you may call 559-366-1849 and the city clerk will assist you with your call. I do have, uh, one yellow card that I'll start with and it's Barbara Harrell.
As she's walking up, Mr. Mayor, um, under item nine, uh, council reports and items of interest, I will be asking our city attorney to give us an update on the group home situation on 2531 Arcerio. And, uh, if anyone has any public comment as it relates to that, uh, those questions may be answered at the time of that report.
Good evening, Barbara. Welcome.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, my name is Barbara Harrell and I'm from Tulare and I am the president of the Tulare Hospital and Community Health Foundation. And I'm here to let you know, and I know you've already gotten some information on it, we have our 39th annual Christmas tree, festival of trees, Christmas tree auction. It's called the Gatsby Christmas, an international flair. It'll be Saturday, November 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Veterans Memorial Building. Um, along with this, of course, is, um, auctioning of trees, also opportunity drawing trees as well as silent auction, uh, dinner prepared by La Piazza. Um, we have entertainment by Living Christ Church at their church, uh, their children's choir. And also too, uh, like I said, La Piazza is there. If you need any more information, we have the cards, you can go to our website, you can also just click on the QR code. And then also too, that makes it very, very easy for you to purchase your tickets. So I hope you'll join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. And I do have a yellow card, Caitlin Yakoma. Welcome Caitlin.
My name is Caitlin Yakoma. I am a veteran from the Navy. I work for the state of California currently and I have a four-year-old daughter. Um, I've lived on the east side of town and I now live on the west side of town. So I don't know if a lot of you know, but there's a huge difference from the east to the west, um, including the parks, which is a huge concern of mine because I do have a child. Um, I take her to Mulcahy Park. We try to avoid it now, um, because every time we have gone, there's been trash littered about and we found a broken drug pipe in the wood, the woodchips where the children are running around. So my concern would be, um, how are we working towards maintaining the parks at an equal rate? Cause every time we go to the east side, the parks are in pristine condition, clean, they're, they're great. But the west side is just very neglected and it's very apparent. Um, so I've just, that's my biggest concern. And I know there's the political factors when it comes to police work and stuff. Um, but there's a lot of drugs going on in Tulare, um, a lot of drug usage. If you drive along West Street, you're guaranteed you're going to see people dealing drugs, you're going to see people doing drugs and our children are seeing that. My daughter who's four asked me, mommy, what are they doing? You know, that's a hard conversation to have with your, with your child and in a way it kind of desensitizes them towards what's going on. Um, and it exposes them at such a young age, they're so innocent. And I feel like it kind of robs them of that. So my concern is also with the drugs going on, it's so prevalent here. Um, and I know we have a huge issue with homeless people. And so I like hearing about doing the projects to help people get into affordable housing. I think that's a great idea. So, um, I just, those are my main concerns. It's just the drugs and the standards when it comes from the east to the west.
Thank you. And you had, uh, we had talked to each other before the meeting. And so I just, I had shared that I know that this issue is of course important to the council and important to our police department and city staff. And I just say, as I knew, I'd said it specifically amongst all of us, but I know council members there and Sagala, and when you reference the districts that we have in the west side. Um, and I'll leave room if anybody wants to add informative information and I know our city manager wants to speak to.
Yeah. Um, so I'm going to.
So I'm going to share some comments that they're maybe difficult to hear. So the comments that you shared are not unknown to us, but they're a little bit different from maybe my perspective, and I just want to share that with you a little bit. So we hear people say things sometimes like there's more investment occurring on the, the city's investing more money on the east side than they are on the west side, and that's not actually true. We track the dollars we spend, and we do our best to try to spend them equally. We get tax dollars from all over the city, and we try to spend them throughout, you know, through our CIP project, et cetera. What is different is the private sector is investing more on the east side than on the west side. Okay? And there's people that will, there's a lot of opinions about why that happens, and it's, and it's the same thing like with maintenance, right? People will say, well, you're maintaining the parks better on this side than the other side, and that's not actually accurate either in a sense. And the reality is, is when we collect tax dollars, we have to maintain a base level of service throughout the entire city the same way. We can't collect dollars from the north side and spend it all on the south side and vice versa. Okay? So we do our best to do that, but what the reality is, is not every side of the city is equal in terms of the things that are happening in the cities, right? So when you have areas of town sometimes where there's maybe more disadvantaged community, lower, lesser resources, sometimes other things follow that unfortunately. And I'm not saying well, this side of town are good people and bad people, it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with things that come sometimes with disadvantaged communities, right? Drug usage, crime, right? Like, for example, I monitor our police reports every eight hours, and there is an inordinate amount of police activity on the west side compared to other parts of the city. And it's not because staffs just drive around looking for problems, it's they're responding to phone calls. And the amount of activity that are responding to a ton of domestic offenses, violent crime, drugs, that's not a city-caused activity, right? And I'm not pointing fingers and saying somebody's to blame and they're bad, I'm saying it's the reality of the situation. So we're actually spending more resources on the west side than we are on the east side because we're trying to keep up with all that activity, and it's a challenge, right? So one of the things this council has done is they're investing more money, but we only invest the regular recurring dollars we get in, right? So as the community grows, that's wonderful for us, and we're able to take those dollars and reapportion them. Council has hired, you know, a number of more police officers, just three in this year alone, to try to manage that. And we're trying to work towards hiring more staff for the maintenance side, specifically for the reason you just described. So council is aware of it, staffs are, we're working on it, but I would just ask that you also understand it's not some conscious decision to have a different level of service, that's not the case. It's the amount of energy and activity that's required to maintain one area to sort of the same standard as the other is disproportionate. It's more, and we're doing our best to manage it. I'm not making excuses. We'll have a meeting tomorrow as staff, where we'll talk about this and go, okay, let's make a round out at the parks to figure out what else can we do to address your concerns? So just, you know, you can reach out to the clerk's office and you can, you know, talk with me, you can talk to our, you know, our parks folks and our police chief and just, just keep that in the back of your mind, please, as well, okay? And if you have specific issues, always call the, the non-emergency hotline for police, and you also, the clerk can get you our contacts where you can contact the Parks Department, you have a specific thing like news, call us, we'll come right out, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so with that, Caitlin, I have your email address, I have your phone number. Thank you in the notes with that, so I'll give this to the city clerk. Chief Inklund, I don't know if there was anything you were going to add to that or not, okay? And then I did, just quickly, just in respect of our parks, and you were specifically talking, you live by Mulcahy. Anything else to add, council members, quickly? All right, thank you for your concerns, they're very important, and appreciate the city manager addressing that. Anyone else in chambers that has public comment this time? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone on the phone? All right, so with that, I'm going to move forward on our agenda. Item seven, presentations, and we have Adventist Health Annual Update.
Good evening. All right, I get to advance my own slides? Nope. Thank you for the opportunity. Okay, I'll try to go quick, but have some good information to share, so I won't rush through it. Just a reminder of, my name's Tim Hadock, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Adventist Health in Central California. Just a reminder of what our structure looks like throughout Central California. We have the largest integrated health system across Central California. We have eight hospitals, one hundred and thirty-seven clinics, and our hospital in Tulare is about the closest to the geographic center of our network that we have. So it's in many ways kind of the strength of our network. Our goal is always to keep care as close to home as possible, but our network also allows us to have different levels of care everywhere with comprehensive resources that a single hospital can't have and have those access points to care across thirty-three different communities that nobody else has, and we're very, very proud of that. It all starts with our people, because without our people, we're nothing. And we spend a lot of time and energy investing in our culture, and we measure the effectiveness of those investments in two ways. The first is through our engagement and culture survey, which we, we work with Gallup on once a year. And the second is measuring our turnover or our staff retention. Our hospital in Tulare is in the top ten percent of all hospitals in the entire country in both engagement through the Gallup survey, as well as in our employee retention or our employee turnover, meaning our employee turnover is at just seven point eight percent. Top decile, top percent, ten percent in the country is fifteen point nine percent for healthcare. So we're about half of the ninetieth percentile, which is extraordinary. It's the lowest mark or the best mark that we have across the entire Adventist Health system, which is twenty-seven hospitals wide all across the west coast. We're really, really proud of that. We operate three outpatient clinics in the city. Our largest one is the one pictured center there. It's our clinic that we built and opened in October of twenty twenty, right around the two-year anniversary of reopening the hospital. And in these clinics, we serve almost three thousand patients per month. And we have within those clinics, primary care, we have a whole host of specialty services that are being offered, and these are also homes to our residency programs. We have growing internal medicine and family practice residency programs that call Tulare home. We, we bring in medical school graduates from all across the country, all across the world into the community of Tulare. They're buying homes here, they're contributing to the economy, and the goal is that we keep them here to be medical professionals for decades to come. And we are just a few years into that journey, but we're really, really excited about what the fruits of our labor have shown so far, and we're going to continue to expand these programs, and it'll benefit this community greatly. We all know this, this is a picture of the tower. We have been working hand-in-hand with the Tulare Local Healthcare District on plans since we, we joined the community back in twenty eighteen to get this tower to life. And we all saw the announcement, the public announcement about two and a half weeks ago that the district put out, that they've issued a request for a proposal for contractors to build out the second floor, which is the procedural floor. So that'll have six ORs and two procedure rooms. And so we're working together on that, that will allow us to expand services and bring more physicians to the community, which, which will be a game changer. Right now, I believe the district believes that the construction would be done around spring of twenty twenty-seven. And then as we have to go through the licensure process and stock and staff and all that, probably around the middle of twenty twenty-seven that we would have that piece open, and we're continuing to work on the other pieces. So the phased approach will really allow us to see substantial progress that I know this community has been waiting for, for well over a decade. So really excited to celebrate that. And then access obviously is really important in healthcare, but without quality and safety, it's very very limited, and we're very proud of the quality and safety results for our hospital here in Tulare. There are four. The Leapfrog Institute is a nationally recognized organization that grades hospitals based on safety outcomes. There are four A-graded hospitals across Kings, Fresno, and Tulare Counties. We're very proud that three of them are Adventist Health Hospitals, one of them is Adventist Health Tulare, an A-graded hospital. And then we are a Gold Plus Designated Center of Excellence for Stroke Care, which is the highest designation that you can have within the American Heart Association, and that's a designation that we became eligible to apply for just a year ago, and we earned the highest grade right out of the gate. I just want to highlight a few investments. So the new MRI, it's a couple of years in now that we, that we invested in, it was three point one million dollars on campus here in Tulare. It remains one of the newest and most cutting-edge MRIs in the entire state of California. We have invested about three million dollars in the cardiac cath lab at the hospital. Right now, in that cath lab, we do diagnostic studies, we do electrophysiology procedures, which are called ablations, and we do device implantations like pacemakers and defibrillators. We've applied for the ability to do interventional cardiology procedures in this facility. That process takes a long time. The last one that went through in the Adventist Health System took about eighteen months. There's, there's a single person whose desk all of these applications go through for the entire state of California. For Tulare, we are at month twenty at this point, so our application has been reviewed. We received the feedback, and we've responded to that, and we were just waiting on the response back to our response. Hopefully, it'll all be accepted. And then we'll have to wait probably a couple of months for the state to come out and do their onsite survey. But we're hopeful that around the beginning of next year, we will have interventional cardiology capabilities at our hospital in Tulare. And then gastroenterology services, we've also just recently invested about three million dollars to bring that service back online at our hospital in Tulare. That also is awaiting some installation of sterile processing equipment there, which we're working with the state on, so likely also a service that comes online around the beginning of the year. And then mammography services, we have invested about a million dollars there. We were hopeful that we would have it up and running for a big splash celebration in the month of October, but the stars didn't align on that. But also, again, we're, we're thinking around the beginning of the year, we would have our Breast Care Center up and running in the facility at Tulare. And then just, we remain incredibly impressed with the vision and execution that this city has had at Zumwalt Park. And I'm just really proud of our partnership on the Adventist Health Amphitheater. It's so exciting to see the community come together. And we're really excited about all the, the next kind of iterations of thanks to come for how that, that venue is to be used. And again, just want to say how much we appreciate our partnership. And this is just a beautiful, beautiful visual of our campus. And there will be a day in the not-too-distant future where every single building on that campus is full of the best physicians that exist and amazing community members getting excellent care. I just, I can't tell you all enough, we've, we've built something special together, all of us in this room. The future is very, very bright, and I just want to thank you for your support and thank the community for their support and embracing us as a key member of the community. And we have invested over a hundred million dollars now since twenty eighteen in this community. And we're really excited for what's to come. So that is my presentation. Do I?
Are there any questions?
Are there any, I wasn't sure if you were going to allow me to do that, because I probably talked longer than you expected, but any questions for me?
Questions go around?
Questions. Thank you for the presentation, and definitely we're very lucky for the investment that Adventist has made in our city for, for many, many years to save our hospital. So we really, I really appreciate that. I know the council and the community appreciates that. A couple of months ago, the council approved the idea of our city manager reaching out to healthcare providers to see if we can have a special session, special meeting or presentations on the impact that federal legislation, policy, and non-action at this point that the federal government has taken on access to health insurance and, you know, a number of policies that could affect rural healthcare, or consider rural healthcare. And so I wanted to see if you guys had started analyzing that to see what impact, I mean, we're hoping that it doesn't cause any clinics to close or, you know, because starting early next year, there'll be a lot of people who might not have health insurance who have it today that may need to seek help. You know, are there things that you guys have started looking at how to take care? Because, you know, the, you know, the idea is that people have could go to a healthcare facility for the basic stabilization type of things, right? You know, they get shot, or they are in a car accident. You know, those things are guaranteed, but beyond that, there is no guarantee that you can get your diabetes medicine or health heart checkup. So have you guys started figuring out how that would impact you?
Yeah, we have, and obviously, there's, there's a lot of concern among among all community leaders and all healthcare leaders about what that, those implications could look like. You mentioned what is, what my biggest concern would be is the fact that there are people that are going to lose their coverage and may fall through the cracks. And so what's really important for us as a, as a collective community is to make sure that we've we've got the right resources and education out there so that those that may need to reapply for their coverage on a more regular basis or may lose their coverage, know what their options or their pathway looks like. That, that to me is one of the biggest fears because what will, what will happen if those access points get scaled back is that the preventative care will, will go away for certain community members, and then they will end up in the emergency department in bad shape, and that's not good for, obviously, them, for the emergency department or for the healthcare system at large. And so there, there is a large concern. I'm hopeful that there will be some, some modifications to the bill that was passed as, as we go through the the process with the government. There's a lot of advocacy, obviously, going on. We've met with a number of elected officials at different levels all across the state and our region. But I would say the, the, the most important thing for us to do collectively is to identify those, those resources and those pathways for our community members that are going to need to engage with the application process probably differently than they might have before if they're a Medicaid beneficiary or what their options look like if they, if they don't meet the requirements any longer. So I don't have a magic solution for you, but it's definitely front of mind and something we've been sorting through across the entire system. Yeah, thank you.
And if I could just really quickly add, council member Sagala, just, we have reached out, there were four primary care providers, large entity agencies, and one healthcare official that we reached out to. We've received confirmation from three of the entities and their willingness to participate. We have not heard upon repeated attempts from two of the five. So now we're just working on setting the date.
All right.
Councilman Maderos?
Thank you for the presentation, and as indicated, thank you for your presence in the community.
Thank you.
Likewise, thank you so much.
Thank you for, as you touched on, the partnership, but especially that key connection, I think, with our community. We're very honored and I think just extending that handshake that we have been missed here. So thank you for your participation in providing healthcare to our community.
Our pleasure, thank you.
With that, but thank you.
Moving forward on our agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Before we continue, may I address the council and staff?
Outside of number nine, is it on this side?
Yes.
Communications? Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. So everyone is aware that there's, on most of our meetings, we present resolutions, certificates of accomplishment, and things like that, members of the community. We very seldom ever do it for our own people. So tonight, I'd like to real quickly note that last month, Councilman Maderos was inducted into San Joaquin Valley College of Law, twenty twenty-five Hall of Fame. He was in the class of eighteen seventy-seven. Oh, I'm sorry, it was nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-seven there. Our very own Chief Deputy City Clerk Melissa Wilcox has earned her bachelor's degree in business administration. And last but not least, our city manager, Mark Mondell, has been recognized as one of the top ten city managers by Government Business Review. I don't know whether that's the county of Tulare, the state of California, the United States of the world. He might be able to address that real quick, but I thought it's about time we start recognizing our own people for their accomplishments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How do we follow that now, since you took the floor?
All right. So with that, uh, any other communications?
No communication.
Okay. I, I think just quickly, I already stated earlier, and I know all council members, uh, would have heard this. A lot of the issues or communications, if you email the city and if you can, if you email us or you email the city clerk, I just want to show we do get those emails. And just want to encourage, as you have communications, thoughts, questions, others, is, uh, we, I receive as mayor, as council member, communications. I take those emails, work with the city clerk, city staff. So I just want to say amongst that, please do so. And, and we receive that and it's shared. It might not be mentioned right here in front of us at the council meeting, but we do get that information. All right, council ports, council reports and items of interest. I'm going to switch around. That's all right. I'm going to start with you, Councilman Maderos. How's that? Please, uh, don't take a shot back across this.
No, 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 that's okay. I appreciate the mention. Let's put it that way. On, uh, October twenty-second, I, I attended a Ag Center Heritage, at Ag Center Board Meeting at the Heritage Complex. And, uh, on the twenty-third, I did have a ceremony I went to, uh, up in Fresno. And, uh, other than that, I did attend the groundbreaking for the, the, Tulare County Behavioral Health Groundbreaking itself. Uh, you, you were there also, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, we, uh, I attended the Fall Festival that Parks and Rec had in Zumal Park on, uh, the thirtieth. That was a huge success that I mentioned before. And, uh, um, that's it. Thank you.
You had also had requested.
Yeah, when we get done with the reports, then unless you want to, you want me to do it.
Maybe touch on it right now.
Sounds good.
With communications in your time.
Yeah, there has been some, uh, questions concerning the status of, uh, our, the group home issue. And I do know we have people here in the commu- in the audience that are interested. And I've asked Mr. Somora to bring us up to date with where, what is now not potential litigation, but actual litigation that's commenced as far as this, uh, city is concerned. So I'll turn it over to you to touch bases on that. And the police chief also, if he wants to add anything.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I think at the last council meeting, I mentioned that the lawsuit had been filed and it was out for service. Uh, we did get them served. Um, and I want to say last Wednesday or Thursday, um, the, there was a property management company who's actually based out of Tulare, who manages that property. And they reached out to me, um, on behalf of the property owner. Um, and we had some discussions. And that led to today, they provided me with, uh, a ninety-day notice for that, uh, tenant to be terminated. So, um, a- as some of the people in the audience know, we were also working on an injunction for, um, that particular property. Um, and to give you a timeline of that, our injunction hearing is currently scheduled for like mid-January. So, uh, it does take time, but, um, that's probably going to get superseded by, um, the termination. Uh, and so the last day, it could happen sooner, but the last day for them to be out, uh, would be January thirtieth. Um, so that's the, that's the latest. Um, if anybody in the public has any questions, um, I'd be happy to answer those after the meeting. We don't have a very long meeting, um, left, but I, we have to talk afterwards.
Just for absolute clarification, when a notice is given, and you said January thirtieth, that's when they're supposed to be out, correct?
That is the latest date that they're supposed to be out.
And if they're not out by January thirtieth, that's when steps can be taken for an eviction process. And then you have to go through that length of time that it takes to complete that. So the concept that they will be out on January thirtieth is not necessarily the case. Is that correct?
Correct. So I guess what it, what it really shows is that the property owner's willingness not to have them there. Um, and so, um, they've, they've essentially agreed that they're going to, uh, they did provide them the notice. If they're not, if they're not, if the tenants are not gone by that date, they will start an eviction process.
And then, uh, to the extent that that's start, starts, then you'll be in a position to hold off and wait and see.
Correct.
If they don't take steps and nothing happens in that regard, you can go for, forward with the injunctive relief.
Correct. Yeah. So we're, from, from the city's perspective, as far as the lawsuit goes, we're going to wait and see. Uh, we're not going to dismiss, uh, but we're also not going to need to prosecute anything at this time. So we'll wait and see what happens, whether the tenants go. Um, you know, we may even be a part of that process, the eviction process, if it comes to that. But, uh, we're kind of in a wait and see on that.
Good.
I would, excuse me, I would also add, Thomas, would you share some of the things you've been?
Yeah, so, um, I was going to add, I've been in contact with Assembly Member Macedo's staff and they've been in contact with staff at California Department of Social Services as it relates to their licensure, because again, that's a, another timeline that could potentially be faster before this January thirty date. So we continue to nudge it in that direction also.
No, I don't have a lot more to add. Uh, we're not getting as many calls, but now we're getting calls from the neighbors. I, I think they're reporting less. Uh, we had a representative, uh, from the state licensing board yesterday come and, uh, do an inquiry on what reports were taken that were reported probably by the juvenile clients. Uh, we couldn't locate any, uh, so something's in the works and it's, it's a buzz at the state level as well.
All right. Well, thank you for the updates and report, and we hope the public finds that information helpful. Council members there?
So on the twenty-second of October, I attended the Tulare County Educator of the Year event where, um, my daughter was, uh, recognized as the Tulare County Teacher of the Year, which was exciting. And then I did attend the Tulare Historical Society's Gala on the twenty-fifth and the night of the Parks event, which I wish I could have been there. I was at the Bell Game serving concessions. And, uh, not to be, you know, biased, but Tulare won the bell again, Tulare Union.
Could, uh, I also went to the Historical Society fortieth. And, uh, the mayor did an excellent job as the emcee of that event. Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I don't know. I was kind of curious of what the reception would be. They didn't ask me to leave, so that was a good part. Bye, Smear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty-first, I attended the, uh, the shelter tour. Um, twenty-second, I had my IACC meeting. Twenty-third, the scoops of thanks out at the amphitheater in Zumal Park. Ice cream provided by Rosa Brothers. Twenty-fourth, uh, the doggy Halloween party, put on my Parks and Recreation. And I was fortunate enough that, uh, Connie and Captain Guerrero and myself were able to judge the, uh, the dogs and their handlers for prizes. On the thirtieth, I was en route to the Behavioral Health Groundbreaking when I received a call from my church that they had fifteen turkeys to be cooked for a event and the ovens wouldn't light. So I was detoured and got there a little bit later.
Councilman Segal.
Yes, I also, uh, wanted to thank the Parks Department for the two events that I attended. The Halloween, uh, event at K-9, uh, Dog Park where, uh, there were a multitude of, uh, community members that came out with their, uh, um, little doggies and big dogs and, and great costumes and it was a nice event. I also had the opportunity to stop by the Fall Event at Zumal Park. And, I mean, I think when I got there, it was probably about fifteen hundred people there. Uh, so a lot of kids in their costumes. It was great to see them. A lot of the vendors were out there. I know our police department was out there and fire department, a number of folks, um, that made the event, uh, very special to all the kids that participated in it. So it's a example, um, example of some great work that our departments are doing. And then finally, just wanted to, um, take a moment to congratulate my L.A. Dodgers for, uh, winning the World Series. So, you know, I know Miss, I know there's some folks that are fans out here. So here's the twenty-four cap, here's the twenty-five cap, and the twenty-six cap is, uh, has been ordered. Uh, congratulations to all those fans who survived the game sevens, uh, roller coaster.
I, I'm not sure if it's true or not. I heard we had various emergency calls in the city for strokes, heart attacks and other defibrillations of what was taking place during that seventh game of the World Series. So, but an interesting night. I think, uh, one, one communication I will touch on is, uh, the unfortunate passing of, uh, Flora Johnson, affectionately known in our community as Grandma, um, the founder of Grandma's House and many other accolades. So I think in the, um, uh, services, uh, I don't have that information. I don't believe those are, service information is ready yet with that, but that I know will surely be shared with the community, uh, myself, and I'm sure others will share that on social media. Uh, but giving a notice to that. And of course, would like in the future, uh, on our agenda of presentations, I think of recognition of a very special life that had a very special impact on our community for Flora Johnson. Yes, and with that, by all means, is our, uh, proposed as council that we adjourn our, our meeting in the Memorial of Flora Johnson, um, this evening. Next, moving forward on our talent, our agenda is item ten, Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. I did receive, uh, a note from our, uh, city staff to please, uh, we can separate out ten point six. There's a note of correction that needs to be made with ten point six. And council, any other comments or direction?
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to adopt all items on the consent calendar. Items, uh, ten point one through ten point thirteen, except for, uh, ten point six.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, ten point one through ten point thirteen with, uh, item removed of ten point six. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Prove five oh, uh, ten point six. And city staff, you have comments on this?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I'd like to apologize for discrepancy on, uh, ten point six. Citizens' option for public safety, it's a California state grant. Uh, there's a clerical error. The correct amount is one hundred and eleven thousand dollars and fifty-four, one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars, uh, instead of the listed amount. Uh, we'll get those amendments to you before it gets ratified for the agenda.
So with that action, we could still approve that, but the ratified items and when the signature would have the corrections in. So we could approve it per the corrections presented. Is that understood?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Counsel, do we have direction?
Can I make a motion to, uh, approve ten point six of the consent calendar?
There's a motion and a second to approve ten point six as the corrections presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ten point six is approved. Ask a corrected. So item eleven, future agenda items, we have none submitted at this time. And we have, uh, staff updates. And I always go, Mr. Oring, you always start it off for us.
Thank you. Just want to thank everyone that came out to both the, uh, event we had at K-9 Bane Dog Park, as well as the Park, Fall Carnival. Uh, kudos to all the staff of the Parks and Rec Department for putting those together. Thank you.
Uh, Streets Department is going to do a quick impromptu project starting tomorrow and going through Thursday. Um, as you know, we previously did some work on eastbound Bard'sley. Uh, as you approach Blackstone, we are going to do closer to the intersection of Bard'sley and Blackstone. So eastbound Bard'sley and southbound Blackstone, we will send out the notices in the morning. Um, there will be one lane of travel still open, so the intersection will not be completely shut down. But, um, the issue arose is we needed to replace the loops from our previous project. Before we replace the loops, we want to do this second piece so we don't have to touch it, um, for quite a few years. So we will send out those notices. It'll be a quick two-day project. We'll get in and get out. Thank you.
Nothing to report.
If I, yeah, if I could have those dates so I can prepare my cell phone for, uh, when that happens.
Tomorrow morning, starting at six AM through, uh, Thursday. It will stay closed overnight just because we are pulling out six inches of, of, uh, the road. So it will be a big dip, so we will keep it closed overnight.
Nothing to report.
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 Nothing to report, but thank you for adjusting the time of council meeting. This is awesome.
Nothing to report.
Right, uh, nothing to report, thank you.
Mr. Mondell, you have the last word.
Once, always have something to say. Uh, last week I had the opportunity to attend the ICMA, uh, City Manager Conference in Tampa. Good conference, um, learned some great things that we'll be bringing back here. Looking forward to sharing those with you when the time is right. Thank you.
Fantastic. And I know we have some special guests with us, right? Some high school students from student govern- or, uh, AP class, history class, right? Fantastic. And afterwards, we can sign your form? Yes, with, unfortunately, we can't give you any bonus points. We often try, but Ms. Pierce says no. And, and yes, what school is it? Mission O?
Mission O.
Do we have any other school represented here as well? Yes. And if I'm correct, Ms. Pierce's class? All right, a, a big bunch this evening. Welcome. All right, with that, ladies and gentlemen, we will adjourn our Tulare City Council meeting. And, and we, if you would, please, thank you, Dennis. I, I got excited. As we adjourn, would you please join the mayor and the council in a moment of silence for Ms. Flora Johnson? Thank you.
Thank you.